All right, it is 6:30. We will call the meeting to order, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, and thank you for coming. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg.
Call him.
Yes.
Odie Saxer.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented, please.
Salute.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Are aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. There are no conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests this evening, and no community input, so that takes us directly to our first item. Under all reports, a good news report from the Brandon Valley Middle School Dream Green Team.
Good evening. There have been many things to celebrate and highlight this school year at the middle school, one of which has been the creation of our Dream Green Team. However, before I turn it over to our Dream Green Team students, a couple of things, a couple of groups to recognize. Our jazz band, under the direction of Devon Malillo, earned an outstanding award at the Middle School Jazz Band Festival in Mitchell earlier this month. This is, for sure, the first time our jazz band has earned this award under Mr. Malillo, but it may be the first in school history. Our stats team is still investigating. Our middle school wrestling team competed their state tournament on February 18th, and we had a number of our students place. Colton Fisher placed seventh, Leah Nelson placed fifth, Cooper Veldt and Harmon Kramer placed second, and Cody Lindigugel placed first. So, congrats to all of them. So, without further ado, I am going to turn it over to our Dream Green Team.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for inviting us today. We are excited to share our vision for a greener and more sustainable future with you. I'm Connor, and we are here on behalf of the BVMS Dream Green Team. Our teachers, helping us are Mrs. Ringling, Mrs. Walters, Mrs. Brott, Ms. Hemborgen, Dr. Nelson, and Mr. Rothenberger.
I'm Eric Pavella.
I'm Mason Sarda.
I'm Austin Nelson.
I'm Scarlett Sampson.
So, as students, we believe in the power of positive change, and we have a dream to create more eco-friendly and inviting outdoor space for all students. Our goal is not just about designing a beautiful area, but also taking responsibility for our environment.
One of our goals is to design an outdoor space for all students. Imagine a space where everyone can come together, relax, and connect with nature. Our first goal is to design an outdoor area that fosters a sense of community and environmental consciousness.
We want to take action and clean up our existing outdoor spaces. It's not just about creating something new, but it's about revitalizing and preserving what we already have. We currently have a garden and a memorial space in the southeast corner of the middle school.
Education is key. We want to equip ourselves and our fellow students with the knowledge and skills to contribute to a sustainable planet. Workshops, seminars, and hands-on activities will be part of our initiative.
Our garden plan includes measuring, securing an eco-rise grant, and cleaning the space by pruning, weeding, replanting, and sustaining the space at the southeast corner of the middle school. We are also working to recycle more effectively and decrease food waste in the cafeteria by donating unopened packaged foods to the Brandon Food Pantry.
Thank you for being here today and believing in the power of student-led initiatives. Today, we can make a lasting impact on our campus and inspire others to join us in creating a more sustainable and beautiful world. We will make our BVMS Dream Green Team a thriving reality.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report, Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Middle School Dream Green Team. Great job. Look forward to all the great projects that you guys work on, so it's very exciting stuff. A couple items to report on here this evening, Madam Chair. Continue to work through our respective strategic planning process. Did disseminate the individual board member strategic planning packets, if you would, please. Spend some time working through those respective items, and we'll schedule individual meetings here later in the month of March. In addition to that, we'll be kicking out our patron survey here this spring. Legislative session, we are currently just past the midway point, I guess, or very close to. Would note that, right now, there are a number of bills that we continue to monitor, but the item that has our focus is House Bill 1048-F, and that is the Teacher Compensation Accountability Bill, for lack of a better phrase. It has three components. Component number one is a minimum state salary of $45,000. We do support that component of the legislation. The second component is the general fund cash balance low monthly percentage, so a cash balance accountability. We do also support that, as that's been something that we've managed extremely well, and that's been important for us as we've driven teacher compensation forward. And then, the third accountability component is that your district's average teacher compensation has to increase at the same rate as the increase to state aid, so they would be directly correlated. So, if the state gave you 4%, your average teacher compensation has to go up 4%. That is a component of the legislation that does potentially cause some issues, especially if you're going through, like, some enrollment ups and downs, if you don't have as many kids as you thought you did, and then you come to the next year. So, we are working through that respective component. There is some level of conversation around a compromise that's going on, so right now, our state legislators are working with our lobbyists, and we're evaluating compromise, so it is one that we continue to monitor closely. Overview of the respective budget process. Big-ticket item here tonight is we're going to go through the five-year financial plans, and that is obviously a key component as we work through our budget process, and then you can see the other big-ticket items coming here later this respective spring. In terms of negotiations and wage recommendations, once the legislative session is all wrapped up, then we begin to get into that negotiations timeline. We'll have our pre-negotiations meeting with the administration and the association, as well as with the administration and the Personnel Welfare Committee, and then collectively, the whole board will meet in executive session prior to negotiations for preparations, and then we'll work through that respective process. Additional dates are outlined there for your review, if necessary. Academic calendar. Parent-teacher conferences are scheduled for the 11th and 12th. School will be in session on March 14th for our snow day. March 15th, no school for a comp day, and then later in the month of March, we have our spring break. Madam Chair, that's all I have for you here this evening, but would certainly entertain any questions that anyone has.
So, it's not so much a question, it's more just a comment in support of bringing it up now rather than at the end. It was really around House Bill 1048-F, just to comment that ASVSD is also in conversations and navigating through that, but wanted to just support what Dr. Larson brought up about it. It's really that third component, specifically where Brandon Valley stands on that. And I know, as we've gone through many years in talking with the association, Brandon Valley has and will continue to do everything we can to give everything that we do have to our staff and our teachers, because we believe that is our best resource. Where it comes down to is just having some local control, whether it's enrollment numbers or wanting to make sure that we also can have the ability to hire staff when we need to, because there will be times when, if we have so limited budget, we don't want to make sure that we short ourselves on being able to have some of that flexibility. So, just wanted to make sure we had those conversations, but it really does come down to local control. Brandon Valley always fares well, and goes towards the top in how we've been able to handle what the state gives us, and we fare well on that, so it helps us when Dr. Larson goes and speaks on behalf of what that accountability looks like. But just wanted to make sure that you all know where Brandon Valley stands, has stood, and will continue to stand, but just making sure they don't take away that local control when we don't know what the foreseeable future holds.
Thank you.
Absolutely. LA is on point with that, and then the one other thing that I did want to do tonight, just because we had some historic items occur, I wanted to ask our activities director to just comment real briefly on some activities.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Larson. Just wanted to share with you, it was a busy weekend for the Lynx. This weekend, we had basketball wrap up their end-of-year seasons, so they will be playing games this coming up weekend. The girls' basketball team will host Brookings on 6 o'clock, and the boys' basketball team will host Spearfish at 3 o'clock on Saturday. Girls are on Friday, boys are on Saturday. With that, we had several things happening over the course of the weekend. First and foremost, we had the state wrestling championships in Sioux Falls. Brandon Valley was fortunate enough to have several students come home as champions and different place winners, so just kind of want to go through some of those. With the boys' team, we had two boys on the podium for seventh place, Beckett Rehorst and Gavin Chapman. Two boys were runner-up as well. Elijah Shunki was runner-up at 190, and Trevon Ome was also runner-up at 126. Navarro Shunki and Brendan Ome were state champions at the wrestling, and for Navarro, that was the fifth time he was the state champion, so that is the first time that's ever happened in the Class A ranks. It's happened in the Class B ranks a couple times, but never in the Class A ranks, so a five-time state champion there. Both the boys, the boys finished fifth overall in the individual, and the previous couple weeks, they finished fifth in the duels as well, so that's kind of there. And then, for our girls, our girls had a great day as well. We only were able to qualify four for the state tournament, but of the four that were there, three of the four reached the podium. Kendall Clayton was fifth place at her weight class. Lillian Hamner was fourth place, and then we have our first-ever Brandon Valley Girls State Champion in Mary Catherine Joseph at her weight class, so very exciting there. We weren't done bringing home the hardware. The state bowling championships were on Friday and Saturday as well. Girls' state bowling champions were fourth, and then our boys' team finished state champions for the bowling team. They lost in the runner-up round, but then they came back to beat Yankton twice in the finals, so they were the state champions for bowling. So, a lot of good things going on, a lot of winter sports wrapping up, but... Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. No board policy tonight, so that takes us to general business. Item number one, presentation of the Brandon Valley School District Five-Year Plan 2024 through 2029, and there will be no action on this tonight.
Madam Chair, just real briefly, before I turn it over to Mr. Lundberg, do want to thank him for all of the effort and energy that go into the five-year financial planning component, as well as with our administration's building-level plans. Would tell you that this year's five-year plan does look a little bit different than maybe some previous five-year plans, and that's due to our budget and our enrollment items, so you'll see how that package all comes together. And I guess the one item that I would note is specifically for this year and this next fall, there may be the need to be able to exercise a little bit of fluidity with enrollment, because we've been very conservative with our enrollment projection here as we move forward, based on how things have gone the last couple of years. But if something changes and we see a big uptick in that, we'll need to have the ability to pivot and adjust, so we'll continue to monitor that very closely, but it is an absolutely sound plan, and let's certainly turn it over to Mr. Lundberg.
Good, thank you. As I tell you every year, the five-year plan document, I think, is one of the more important documents that you guys review. It's kind of your roadmap to doing, performing one of your most important tasks, and that's approving annual budget each year, so this kind of gives you the guidelines and the roadmap to doing that. The summary section is divided into four, I'll call them different projections, capital outlay, general fund, special education fund, and enrollment. I'll just take each one of those as we go here. First one is the capital outlay fund. That fund is our major equipment and building needs fund, and a lot of positive coming out of that fund, as we've been talking about through the past year. Management of the debt service in that fund, or lack thereof, is going to afford us some abilities to build another new elementary school with no tax increases. And that's not a smoke and mirrors, no tax increase, that's solid. Zero. We're already taxing at the absolute maximum with the capital outlay fund, so it's not... It's an absolute zero. $30 million school. That's just a lot of planning down the road, doing the appropriate bond issues when we needed them, and doing the saving for the projects until we had the cash to do them, and just being very prudent with those dollars. This past year, as you know, in the capital outlay fund 2324, put a $10 million addition on the high school. Completed in 2023, or... Yeah. On the verge of being completed in 2024, let's say. In addition to that, there was a purchase of just under $4 million for a land acquisition for the school district. Just came out of the fund, your operating fund there. Somewhat depleted our fund balance, but it's all right. We'll build it back up and get to our next building project down the line. As you can see, we're building that back up five years down the road, and we'll, I know we have some ideas what we'll use that for. In addition, the fund, the capital outlay fund, was able to assist us in dealing with our budget enrollment shortfall. We were able to transfer an additional $300,000 from the capital outlay fund into the general fund to assist us in dealing with that shortfall. It made the total transfer 1.4 million rather than 1.1 million that we had budgeted, but able to do that. So, a lot of good things came out of the capital outlay fund this year. Yes?
Do you talk to the 8% and then also the social studies? Is that cost being pushed in '24, '25?
Oh.
Is that pretty solid, or?
No, on the bottom there, it's just a footnote that says assumes a property valuation increase of 8% annually.
Is that pretty conservative historically?
Up on the top, so our valuation's going to go up. That's what I'm assuming, an 8% growth annually.
And that's historically, okay, am I right?
Yeah, and then the curriculum adoptions, I just kind of do that for my own thing. It kind of gives you an idea of what we're buying, and you can see on the first line, I've done the major textbook adoptions. That corresponds with the social studies, science, fine arts, PE, and language arts. Okay? The 1.4 million dollar transfer now, though, you got to have to remember that that becomes almost permanent. And once you transfer that, you become reliant on it now, so it's built in. It's a permanent transfer, so we did that this year, and it's going to roll over to next year. In the year 2425, you can see our debt service jumps from $510,000 this year to 1.4 million next year. We will issue capital outlay certificates to pay for the new elementary school that we will begin constructing in probably the fall of '24. We'll issue those certificates sometime in the third or fourth quarter of '24. Timing's going to be critical on that, but we also, we're going to have to issue them. We need some money, because people are going to be doing work, and we got to pay the bills. So, there's going to be additional interest costs in '24, '25, not maximum interest cost, but it's just about $900,000 plus the $500,000 that we have on the Brandon Valley Intermediate School. Be a total debt service of 1.4 million next year, and then the following years, you'll see a number of 3.1 million. That's the total debt service to fund our school and the intermediate school that's currently being paid back. So, we'll have total debt service of about 3.1 million. And just a note on that, I mean, we started talking about building this school out of capital outlay funding years ago. Most of you guys have been on here a long time. I mean, we've been talking about this for years. I go back in my file, though, the one caveat that when we started talking about it was $20 million. It's not 20 million anymore. It'll probably be $35 million elementary school, so... We're still able to do that. We've had substantial growth each year in our valuation, but the levy is set. You can't, we can't adjust that levy. So, I think it's a very cool deal that we're able to accomplish those things. Some other notes I had on there. The revenue generated in the capital outlay fund is all property tax, based on the valuation, and our valuations have gone up considerably. You can see on the top line there, this year, our valuation is 3.6 billion. The following year, we're projecting 3.9 billion, 4.2 billion. Keeps going up 8% throughout there. Those increases in valuation, you only get the actual real growth on that. If my house goes up $100,000 next year, the school does not realize that additional tax money that's generated, the levy gets lowered to make the capital outlay levy the same. But there is real growth, too, that new homes, new construction and stuff. We realize about $350,000 of additional income each year in the capital outlay fund because of that real growth. That's why you'll see the revenue generated goes up about $350,000 each year. So, it is key that we continue to have that growth, and I don't have any huge concerns on that growth. I mean, it continues to boom around here in the Sioux Falls, greater Sioux Falls area. We haven't seen near the growth in Brandon proper that we have in the past, but outside, you know, the Brandon Valley School District encompasses a large area outside of just the city of Brandon. 65% of our total valuation is outside the city of Brandon proper. Let me say that again. 65% of our total valuation is outside the city of Brandon proper. So, it encompasses a huge area. Let me see here. You can see in the middle section there of the chart, the capital outlay fund projections, all that red there. That's the expenditures that we have year in and year out. Textbook adoption, buses, technology. We spend $1 million a year on technology. You can see all the one-to-one initiatives. We are now one-to-one, 5 through 12. Every kid in the 5 through 12 in the Brandon Valley School District has a device. Buses, copier leases, the transfer to the general fund, and then the bottom line is our so-called savings account to put some money away for additional building projects down the line, which our plan right now would be that towards the end of the five-year period, there's going to be some needs at the middle school. What those needs are will be, you know, determined at that point. There's not, the 2040 vision does not rock solid determine what we're going to do there, if it's another school, or additions, or whatever, but there will be some needs as you look at the enrollment projections at the middle school at the end of that five-year period.
Paul?
Yes?
Question. Your 3.1 million up there on debt service, that's principal and interest on all buildings, correct?
Yep, on the new building and the intermediate school, the capital outlay. It's just the capital outlay debt. The Eastside Elementary and the intermediate. We issued certificates for that, so... And that's, will be on a 20-year payback, and I'm a real stickler on that. A lot of schools, you'll see, will issue debt now, 25, 30 years out. Not going to happen under my watch. It should be a 20-year issue, and that's rock solid on it. We're going to stay there. If the building comes in at 45 million, the guy next to you has got some work to do. Any questions on that fund? I think it's worth noting, though, that all these years we've been talking about it. I look in my file, and I've been running debt service schedules for 10 years, because we've been talking about that long, that we're going to buy this school out of the capital outlay fund. And it starts at 20 million, and I have all these schedules going from '20, '22, '25, '28, '30, '33, '35. At 35 million, that would be $280 a square foot. Okay? What I had on the capital outlay fund, the general fund. General fund is our major operating fund of the district. It's obviously the largest fund that we have and the one that we deal with the most. It's a complex budget situation that's very difficult to put into a chart that everybody can understand, so just bear with me here and try to work through it. It's hard, and I wish I had just a magic wand that I could make this easy, but there's a lot of moving parts in this thing, so I try to make it understandable for the community and the board, but you have to remember, there are some complex parts of it, so I'll try to work through those as we go here. The general fund, obviously, we're trying to overcome two years of enrollment shortfalls. We were short 130 this past year, kids, and we were short about 60 the year before that, so we've been two-year shortfall, probably 200 kids. So, we're dealing with that and doing a pretty doggone good job of dealing with it. But we have to remember, as a Board of Education, everybody was at the trough when we were budgeting 200 new students. We were funding things based on 200 new students. So, if we're not funding everything this year, there's a reason. And you can see that we're not funding everything when you go through the chart. To deal with the enrollment shortfall, we made some hard decisions. Like I said, the capital outlay fund, we transferred another $300,000. We had to cut two in-service days from the teachers' compensation, which amounted to $260,000. And then, we had another $300,000 that I'll say I consider as soft cuts that we implemented. Soft cuts being that we didn't fill some positions, but we didn't cut those positions. They're right back in for next year. They weren't cut, they just were delayed. So, that's another thing that you don't see on this chart, but it's in there. And we'll realize those monies when we deal with the fund balance. As I told you a couple meetings ago, Murphy's Law will hit on some of our other revenues, and sure as heck it did. Murphy's Law will hit on some of our other revenues and sure as heck it did. Uh, bank franchise tax was down two hundred thousand dollars this year. And that's a, that thing bounces all over the place, but, you know, it's all in the area of a million bucks every year, but. It, it does bounce on us and we just gotta deal with it. That's the way the funding formula works, that it's another revenue, so it goes out one year and then it'll work its way back in the following year. We'll get credit for that. But it's a delay and we still have to deal with the shortfall of the two hundred thousand. Let me take you, just bear with me on this one. On that twenty-three, twenty-four column, you'll see down at the bottom, six point seven million dollar fund balance that I'm projecting at the end of the year. Beginning of the year, that was seven point four million. Uh, follow me through, we had a budgeted deficit of just under five hundred thousand, four hundred and ninety-three thousand. We had an enrollment shortfall of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, being a hundred and thirty kids short. We reduce that by three hundred thousand with the capital outlay transfer. We reduced another two hundred and sixty thousand by eliminating the two in-service days. So it came down to a deficit of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand. We have some soft cuts in there. That I think we'll realize about two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Of those cuts. We're gonna see those actually take place in this year's budget. And then we lost two hundred thousand dollars on our bank franchise tax. So our net deficit at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four is gonna be about eight hundred thousand. Seven point four million minus eight hundred. Six point seven million. I'm, I'm hoping for an extra hundred grand in there somewhere of, of things that, uh, come in there. Everybody with me on that? So we're reducing our fund balance, but we're still at seventeen percent fund balance. And our, our goals have always been minimum fifteen percent. So we're making this work. Next year, you can see, uh, I'm budgeting eighty new kids. And we'll talk about that later, but that's substantially less than what we're used to budgeting in, in enrollment. Substantially, half. Uh, it's just a trend that we've, it's becoming a trend that the enrollments aren't jumping as much now. Maybe they will next year, I don't know, but it is a trend. So I'm eighty next year and then a hundred each of those next three years and then drops down to sixty the fifth year. Shows a state aid increase next year of four percent. Yeah, match that with a salary increase of four percent. Each pers- each one percent of a salary increase across the district in the Brandon Valley School, in the general fund amounts to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Times four is one point one million dollars. For a four percent salary increase. Probably gonna have to, uh, some changes in our health insurance plan are probably imminent. As I say to you all, all the ti- our health insurance plan isn't rocket science. We're paying money, money goes out for claims. And when more money goes out than what we pay in, it's gonna go up. And, uh, we've been going up. Uh, quite a few years here, so there probably have to be some form of changes. We realized some operational savings for the clo- with the closing of Valley Springs of a couple hundred thousand. Our early retirement expenses this year are thirty-three thousand less than last year. We'll have some savings from staff that leaves. And then also I put in there, because when I get to enrollment projections, I have our kindergarten down basically one section of kindergarten. So I put a kindergarten te- uh, section negative there. So the bottom line for next year, I have a surplus of, uh, roughly two hundred thousand. I think, uh. It's, uh, we need to give the fund balance a break in the general fund. Therefore, budgeting a surplus, a little surplus to protect ourselves from any shortfalls. As Jared said earlier, wants to remain flexible as those enrollments come in, which they could come in higher. But remember, they, they can come in lower too. So I, I think we gotta maintain that flexibility on both ends. As we've always talked about, the general fund is driven by the enrollment. Enrollment is everything to the general fund. And that per student allocation, what it goes up each year. And, uh, we've, last couple of years, obviously, we've been experiencing a lot smaller growth. And our projections are reflecting that. Basically projecting about a hundred kids a year, whereas this document every year prior to this year always showed two hundred kids. So.
Question about the enrollment, Ben?
Yes, sir.
As much as you've been working here and documenting everything, is there a pattern? Not necessarily to the, the exact, you know, but are there roller coasters, ups and downs? You know, the, the next three years after next year, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, you got a hundred and then you drop back down to sixty. Is that something that you're, you see in that swing of?
You know, is, is there, is there a pattern? Is there a trend? That's a very difficult question to ask, but, uh, obviously, I've always based my enrollment projection, history is the best indicator of the future. And, uh, when we get into that enrollment section, I'll show you a couple, uh, numbers that will kinda indicate that. Trend there now. I use a, uh, what they call a. What do they call it? A progression, a class size progression model that just takes last year's class and factors in percentage increases. And we have not had that internal growth is where I'm seeing a difference. Because I was always plugging in four percent in those internal numbers. Spreadsheet had current times four percent. This year, plugged in zero to one internally. You know, like current grades, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you know, whatever, all the way through. We just haven't been seeing the internal growth there. And the kindergarten, that's always a, it's a big driver of everything, and so we'll know that in a couple of weeks, how that's looking. We always sleep better after we get some numbers coming out of that. And I, as I told you before, I did knock that down. Generally, it's a five hundred, five hundred and ten, and ours is four seventy. My projection has four seventy in there. So I'll hit a couple of numbers on the enrollments, maybe that'll help answer that. Any other questions on the general fund? It's our major fund and the major things coming out of there, salary, benefits and new staff. We don't have any new staff projected in this next year. You can see that the following years that we get back into the mode where we're, uh, having three-quarters of a million dollars of new staff each year. Kinda goes back to, you know, we, we're down two hundred from. Two years. Uh, special education fund. Similar to the general fund, it's all based on a per student allocation and the number of kids that we have in the programs. I'm not gonna dwell a lot on this because the numbers haven't been finalized in special ed. They're being finalized as we speak. And then we will know a lot more when those do. It's currently looking favorable to the Brandon Valley School District. We, we grew in our student count fifty-four kids this past year. Fifty-four more kids and quite high needs kids, so they're gonna be reflected in our enrollment. So I have put this together, whether it's worth the paper it's written on right now, I'm, I'm not gonna comment on that. Uh, I'd like a little bit more time to, but it looks like it's, the special education fund should be in pretty good shape. Uh, lastly, the enrollments. The fall, if you can go to the fall enrollment, Jared, right after this one. That's all the staff that we've hired in the last twenty, twenty-five years. Yeah. Is, here's a couple number that I highlighted, the last six years. From that four thousand ninety-one. To the forty-two, twenty, that was a gain of a hundred and ninety-nine. The next year, it's a gain of a hundred and seventy-five. The next year, it's a gain of two hundred and sixty-one. The next year, it's a gain of a hundred and seventy-five. Lot of years of one seventy-five, two hundred, okay? Here we go. Gain of one fourteen. Gain of thirty-five. So it's two years, two years probably doesn't make a. A for sure trend, but it's showing, I, I think we need to adjust. And that's why we are adjusting to, with the enrollment. Everybody okay with that? I mean, the whole thing, all twenty-eight years, it's four point four percent annualized growth. And that would be the number that I would normally put into my internal growth numbers, the grade progression model. But substantially reduce that. To between zero and one and a half percent, depending on the grade. And that's reflected, uh, in the actual enrollment projection chart. Yeah, go down a couple. That's our bu- building utilization chart. Uh, good shape there and we're, we're just right on track for this new elementary school to be open on the east side and, and, uh. No problems there. The next chart then is the actual enrollment projections. They are hard to see up on the screen there, but, uh, we got, uh. This is current year, twenty-three, twenty-four, does not include out-of-district placements. These are just kids in the, in the school, just under five thousand. This is plus eighty-one then. Our kindergarten is three eighty plus ninety, four seventy, when last year's was five fifteen, I believe. Six, four ninety-six. And I'm dropping it down to four seventy, so a twenty-five, a, a section of kindergartens, basically, I took out, reduced.
Is there any way to see where growth is coming from with kids? So last week, I read an article about Brandon being, having, you know, the highest home valuations and, um, highest average income. Uh, we talked about the multifamily growth on the, uh, east side of Sioux Falls, and is that not bringing kids in? It's, it's growth in property valuation, but not kids. Are we able to see by the neighborhood, you know, where are their families moving in and where are they moving in to?
I don't, uh.
There's no way to see that?
Uh, dive into that, where those kids are coming, I mean, I can tell which school they're, when they're, when the enrollment growth is happening at Fred Assam. I know it's coming from that, that area, but it just, I don't dive into that to see that it's actually coming from that multifamily. But there, I mean, it's kind of a statewide thing too. There's a lot of the school, the, the major growing school districts last year, all incurred less than projected, uh, growth numbers. So there's a trend there. I just read in the Wall Street Journal today, there was an article that, that they said you, you needed to make two hundred thousand dollars a year to, to be able to afford to have children. So I think there's a lot of people who are holding off on ha- having children. Uh, just for the money sake of, of things and whatnot, so I don't know.
Well, one thing that I, I was thinking about with the enrollment numbers, are people not moving to Brandon with kids? When did interest rates really kick off? Was it in the last two years or was it just the last year where they started getting kinda crazy? There's material cost concerns and then with interest rates, is that crowding out the market?
It's, it coincides with it, yes. There's no question that coincides with that, the interest rate hikes going up and the ability of people to purchase homes. Uh, no, no question and, and. I think you're right on the, the multifamily housing. We don't see a lot of kids coming out of there. That we would in a single family home.
Paul, I've got a question.
There's, one more. There's more apartments on the east side of Sioux Falls and it just blows my mind. I mean, you would think that would be a school right there, but. I believe that those are a lot of younger professionals. They don't wanna mow their lawn and just want all the amenities of, of nice living in Sioux Falls, Brandon Valley. Sorry.
That's okay. I know you wanted to shut me down. My question is, we're talking about trying to get growth or number of kids moving in, okay? What have we seen leave the district in the past couple of years as far as opening and rolling out?
A. We, we looked at, uh, the, the high school a lot last year, uh, just for that purpose and. You know, it wasn't a big number. There were some kids that moved out and kids that just physically, different addresses, you know, moved to another state. Wasn't a huge number of kids that just opened or rolled to another school. There's some, but then we, we pick up some that come back too. So it's not a huge number.
But every number would help.
Every kid's worth seventy-three hundred bucks. So, yeah. Anyhow, then the, the numbers, you can tell eight plus eighty-one, plus ninety-seven, plus ninety-six, plus one oh four. So those are the three years of plus a hundred, and then that final year is plus sixty. That's just because the high school's getting, those class sizes are getting pretty consistent in year five. So there's, it's gonna be solid, that the high school's gonna be around fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred kids at that point. It's not gonna incur that growth at the. Of a small class going out, a bigger class coming in. The last chart is the actual fall enrollment count. That we were based, our funding's based on five thousand and fifty kids, five thousand and seventeen kids, we don't count early childhood. So our funding this twenty-three, twenty-four school year is based on five thousand and seventeen kids. And that's the basis that we start with now. We lose kids during the year, we gain kids during the year too. Uh, these numbers are, are not gonna be exactly the same, this is as of nine twenty-nine, twenty-three. They're not gonna be exactly the same number. You know, Fred Assam might tell me that there's five hundred and ten kids at Fred Assam right now. Brandon Elementary might tell me there's six hundred and fifty kids right now, in and out, going all over the place, but we have to have a starting point. I touched on that, the utilization chart, we're just very well positioned with respect to the new facilities, adding that new school in twenty-twenty-six. Twenty-six, twenty-seven school year will be the first year it's on, online. But, uh, we're well positioned for that, I think. That's the new elementary, uh, East Side Elementary. By the golf course.
That's a twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah, with like the open of twenty-seven.
Another caveat there, you're gonna have a bond issue that's paid off in twenty-twenty-seven. So our hope would be to meld that in. Right, right. That's all I have. Other questions? Hopefully it provides you with a roadmap that we're gonna be going into or approving a budget for this next year. Still a lot of things happening with the budget. Just not quite as many.
I got, in general, in the general fund, looking for that East Side Elementary opening up. We are basically, and you're gonna fill that with instructors. We are basically, and you're going to fill that with instructors, you're basically going to be using instructors that we have on hand because Valley is moved over here as far as, we'll take some of those over there and use those to fill in the void, the teaching void there, correct?
Certainly.
And then your intermediate school would be same thing then, right?
Right. And, uh, the, the elementary on the east side, the main purpose of that elementary is to relieve some pressure off of, uh, Robert Bennett's. That's the most pressure point we have right now. And, uh, continues to be a pressure point because there's a lot of building out in the bluffs and, and now they've sold that land just down from the bluffs and stuff, so there'll be a lot of construction going on there, and that melds well with positioning ourselves that we'll take a bunch of kids out of. And then the, the faculty will move with them, but then hopefully have more growth so we can add back additional faculty.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lombard, for that presentation, very much appreciated. And we learn something new every year and every time we go through it, so thank you. Item number two under general business to approve the 2023, 2024 academic calendar modification recommendation is presented.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. To this point, we've lost three days that have been impacted by weather. Uh, in terms of those three contractual days for teaching staff, uh, what we would like to do is we would like to have school on our snow day, uh, which we've already announced and kicked out, uh, that information. And then the other two days will be utilized in the following way. Um, one day would be utilized for our staff to, um, conduct three collaborative learning community meetings or CLCs, that's, uh, the PD model that we've, uh, been utilizing here this year. And when we lost those, um, lost those days within the contract with our budget cuts, this provides us the ability to provide them back, uh, that, uh, that time to continue to move that forward. So, um, that is one day, and then the second day will be, uh, flexible curriculum development planning. Um, so we'll utilize that, and that will also, um, in addition to being responsive to teacher need, um, will allow us to, um, provide our staff the time necessary to train on our new curriculum adoptions and, uh, those other respective things. So no change to the students' last day, uh, and no change to the last day for, uh, in terms of teacher work day, but, um, that's the approach that we're taking with these two respective days. Uh, we do have a tentative plan in the event we miss one more day or two more days or three more days, but, uh, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. Right now, we would like you to approve, uh, the calendar as presented.
I would entertain a motion to approve the 2023, 2024 academic calendar modification.
Say it.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Under personnel, I would entertain a motion to approve items one through eight as presented, There's been a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Item nine is a transfer for your information. Under communication, there is a Board of Education, uh, there is a thank you there from a staff member. That takes us to formal board reports, does anyone have one they would like to share tonight? Oh, I guess I can. Um, we had our TeachWell meeting and, um, we passed our, um, audit, which is always nice when you get a passing grade, I guess. It's still, still a thing when you're an adult, so. Anyone else have a, okay, all right. Hearing no others, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, and thank you very much, everyone, for coming tonight.